It's so empty. Ready? Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Beerman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Petron?
Here.
Councilmember Hall? Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items four through twenty-eight on the consent docket.
So moved. Second?
The motion on the floor is to place items eight, four through twenty-eight on the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to place items four through twenty-eight on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Item four, approval of the City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. City Council Oversight Committee Meeting of September twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee Minutes of September twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen. City Council Conference Minutes of October twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. City Council Community Planning and Transportation Committee Minutes of October twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen. City Council Special Session Minutes of October twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. City Council Special Session Minutes of November fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Joint City Council Senior Ad Hoc Committee Minutes of November twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. And City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of December tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Item five, ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty-six upon first reading. Closing a portion of a platted fifty-foot building line located on the front boundary of Lot One, Block One, Norman Center North Edition. Item six, ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty-seven upon first reading. Rezoning property near the southwest corner of East Boyd Street and Twelfth Avenue Southeast for R-one Single Family Dwelling District to Spud Simple Plan Unit Development. Item seven, ordinance nineteen twenty dash thirty upon first reading. Closing four portions of Public Rights of Way on the south side of Block Five Bel Air Number Three Edition. Item eight, ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty-eight upon first reading. Rezoning the southeast corner of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Northwest and Franklin Road from A-two Rural Agricultural District to PL Parkland District. Item nine, ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty-nine upon first reading. Rezoning the North Base Complex south of Rock Creek Road between Flood Avenue and Goddard Avenue from A-two Rural Agricultural District to I-one Light Industrial District with special use for municipal uses with a variance to the exterior masonry requirement. Item ten, submission of the Finance Director's Investment Report as of November thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. Item eleven, submission of the monthly departmental reports for the month of November two thousand and nineteen. Item twelve, submission of the City Manager's Change Order Report. Item thirteen, submission of the City of Norman Tiff Number Two Oversight Committee Annual Report for the period of July first, two thousand and eighteen, to September thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Item fourteen, payment of quality jobs incentive to the Norman Economic Development Coalition in the amount of forty-nine thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents in accordance with contract thirteen fourteen dash one oh six, University North Park Tiff Development Agreement Number Six as amended. Item fifteen, authorization for the purchase of a natural gas engine and labor to repower an existing compressed natural gas compressor from JW Power in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents for the delivery and setup to accommodate fast fill and slow fill expansion needs. Item sixteen, authorization for the purchase of a CNG fueling facility storage vessel from CP Industries in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to accommodate fast fill and slow fill needs. Item seventeen, awarding bid eighteen nineteen dash eighty for removal and land application of digester biosolids in the amount of point one nine five cents per gallon for a total contract amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Approval of contract nineteen twenty dash six with industrial hydro services, performance bond and statutory bond, and budgetary appropriation from the Water Reclamation Fund balance. Item eighteen, request for proposal RFP nineteen twenty dash thirty-eight and contract nineteen twenty dash eighty-nine with Mid-America Sports Construction in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand and eighty-six dollars and the accompanying bonds for the Norman Forward Griffin Park Phase Three B Southwest Field Improvements Project. Item nineteen, Norman Rural Certificate of Survey COS nineteen twenty dash one for Tim's Estates and Acceptance of Easements located near the northeast corner of Sixtieth Avenue Northeast and Alameda Street. Item twenty, acceptance of a public drainage easement donated by Norman Affordable Housing Corporation for Lot One A, Block Twenty-three A Jones Edition, one fifteen East Hubert Street for stormwater improvements and maintenance. Item twenty-one, acceptance of a temporary construction easement donated by Norman Affordable Housing Corporation for Lot One A, Block Twenty-three A Jones Edition, one fifteen East Super Street for construction of stormwater infrastructure. Item twenty-two, special claim submitted by OG&E through CMR in the reduced amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents for damage to a buried cable at the northwest corner of Moran Drive and Beacon Avenue. Item twenty-three, special claim submitted by RJH Realty Investments in the reduced amount of two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and sixteen cents for property damage as a result of a water main break at thirteen sixteen, thirteen eighteen, and thirteen twenty Glen Oaks Drive. Item twenty-four, acceptance of a grant in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred dollars from the National Association of City and County Health Officials to support the efforts of the Medical Reserve Core Volunteer Program managed by the Emergency Management Division of the Fire Department. Approval of a contract and budget appropriation. Item twenty-five, final acceptance and final payment of contract nineteen twenty dash five with RDNJ LLC doing business as ATech Paving for the Dawes Tonawal Alley Drainage Improvement Project. Item twenty-six, contract with Johansson Consulting Incorporated doing business as Johansson Group in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars to conduct a classification and compensation study to ensure internal equity between positions and to achieve a pay relationship within the market to maintain a qualified workforce for the City of Norman in addition to a compensation management software system to streamline compensation process. Item twenty-seven, contract with the Gooden Group Incorporated in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the development of marketing materials and public education for the two thousand and twenty census complete county campaign. Item twenty-eight, resolution appropriating twelve thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents received from Traffic Signals Incorporated from Risk Management Miscellaneous Reimbursement Refunds Account to replace traffic signal equipment damage during the site work for a proposed on cue at South Classen Boulevard. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the consent docket? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
My votes have been approved. The consent docket passes unanimously.
Off consent. Item twenty-nine, ordinance nineteen twenty dash twenty. Rezoning two thirty West Gray Street from Center City Form Based Code to Center City Planned Unit Development. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section. Motion to adopt?
Second?
Is there a representative for the applicant to make a presentation?
Hi, Chelsea McDonald, four two nine Clermont Drive. We are co-owners of McD Wellness Society. And we're a family-owned and operated business. We're a Norman family. We're both graduates of Norman North. We, McD Wellness Society is requesting rezoning from Center City Form Based Code Urban General Frontage to CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development for two thirty West Gray Street. So that's the subject tract. Shows our location at the corner of Webster and Gray. It's the side of our building from Webster. This is the rear of the building where we're proposing we add two parking spaces. One is ADA accessible. Okay, so this is the site plan. We will still be using over half, about two-thirds of the property for retail and changing one-third to processing. Okay, this is our support map. We didn't have any argument. We did have one support letter. So, okay. In closing, we'd kindly like to remind you that our zoning request is similar to the one requested and approved at four twenty-one West Gray Street. With one exception, we will not be using any heavy machinery, no chemicals, just heat extraction. And we plan to make pre-rolls, bath bombs.
Small batch edibles.
And we ask for the council's support in approving our request.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall?
Hello. Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions. How long have you been in business in this location?
In this location since June.
Since June?
Yes.
And have you been in business in other locations before you chose this one?
Yeah, we opened on Crawford.
Okay.
It was Crawford and...
Crawford and in May?
Yeah, well, the alley. It was right in between.
Behind the event center.
Yeah.
And how long were you in business in that location?
Six months.
Six months. Can you tell me a little bit more about why you chose to change locations?
Yeah, so the parking was terrible there. We wanted a bigger space. And we were only renting the front half of the building, which the restroom was in the back half of the building, which we had to traverse through to get back there. So we decided to move.
So it was just a better location for you?
Yeah.
One of the things that you just mentioned was that you were going to devote two-thirds to retail and one-third to the processing area?
Right.
In your, in your application or in your presentation, it does describe in here that your interior square footage will be allocating, dispensing medical marijuana at eleven hundred square feet and the thousand square feet that we use for processing. So have you changed your mind about how you're using your space? Because this is more of a fifty-fifty split.
Well, no, it's, I guess I just misspoke.
Okay, so what you presented on your diagram and what you have in your written document is what your intent is? So it is more of a fifty-fifty split? Okay. I also had a...
Councilmember Hall, can I, I was confused there for a moment. It was one-third or fifty percent?
It's about fifty. It's a little bit less than fifty.
I'm sorry, it just got my attention because when she was describing the use of the square footage, she said that two-thirds was going to be devoted to the dispensary and one-third to processing. And when I read her document, it was more of a fifty-fifty split.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I might have said something?
No.
That I misspoke to. Okay, great, thank you. And I just have a few other questions about your written narrative. You also talked in that same paragraph where you were discussing how you were going to use your space about the exterior look that you were going for to enhance the vibe of the Center City Form Based Code per our professional staff. Could you explain a little bit in more detail what, what you have in mind? Who was your professional staff? Do you have a, do you have anything with you tonight or what the exterior is going to look like?
We're not going to change the exterior.
Okay, so...
I mean, it's been painted and we've just added the signs. We just, we haven't, I mean...
Okay, then I guess I'm a little confused because it says the subject property will have an exterior look to enhance the vibe of the Center City Form Based Code per our professional staff.
Yeah, we were just talking about the...
Occupying the corner was empty for a little time.
Yeah, it was vacant, so...
Okay, so there is no...
We're not hiring anybody to change the look.
Okay, so the look that you will maintain is what is presently there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, did you have something else that you intended by putting that statement in there?
No.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
I think this might be for, I just need a memory jogger. Maybe Catherine can answer. The past ones that we've approved that went along these lines that were current dispensaries that wanted to become processors, did they do PUDs or CCP?
It depends on the zoning. You know, in some cases, they would be eligible for a special use.
Would this one be eligible?
But this one, because it's in Center City, it's...
So that's why it wouldn't be?
This Spud is the method they've gone with.
Okay, that was, I was just curious why we were doing Spud instead of... Does that Spud then trigger anything else in the Center City? Like, is there, you know, how, and I'm sorry, but my rural area doesn't make me pay attention to this one very much. So does it trigger anything else if we do a CCPUD here? I mean, how different is this than a special use functionally?
It's pretty similar. You can attach conditions to a special use just like conditions can be contained in a SPUD or a PUD. So they're pretty similar in that way.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Beerman?
Catherine, along those same lines, a PUD stays with the property no matter who is there. So this would, in effect, be a permanent zoning change for this location to allow medical marijuana dispensing and processing, if we approve this, correct?
Yes, that's an excellent point.
Special use leaves with the applicant, if they leave.
Right, special use is, is with the applicant. The zoning stays with the property until the use changes regardless of the property owner.
And to me, that's kind of where I get really sticky with this one. I don't really have a problem with special use permits because if you then decide to leave and go somewhere else, that special use is dissociated with the property. And that protects the underlying zoning so that it kind of reverts back to that original use. My concern about this is that, in effect, this basically means that forever or until we change the entire underpinning of the zoning for that area, this, this plot will forever be able to be a dispensary and a processor. And so, to me, that's where I get a little concerned about it because it is a permanent change. There are so many other parts of the city where that's not the case. Where, you know, if you have a building somewhere else, then you can get a special use permit. And to me, that's a much lower bar to meet. So that's kind of my biggest concern with this is that this is a PUD that stays with this property forever. And that's where I get a little concerned because while it's on the edge of the Center City Form Based Code area, it still is in the Center City Form Based Code area. And the reason we allowed ourselves PUDs was to allow ourselves the ability to say yes or no, separate and distinct from any other action that we've taken on any other parcel. So that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter?
Jane, can you remind me, again, I'm not great on the zoning stuff, but so just remind me why this isn't allowed already in this area, maybe? Why do we have to have a special designation here?
So the dispensing is allowed in the Center City, but the processing, the only option that they have in the Center City is to do the CCPUD. We don't have a special use request within the Center City Form Based Code.
Okay, and what's the, was the fear of not having, why, why did we do it that way? Jog my memory again.
Why did we do this?
Why do we not allow special use just to make the bar a little higher? So that if there's a variance or maybe someone...
My understanding when they were doing the CCPUD option within the Center City Form Based Code, they were at a meeting and someone had asked, well, what if I want to do something outside of what is allowed in the Center City Form Based Code? And staff at that time wrote in the option that they could do a CCPUD. They, they just didn't use the special use option for this area as the, as the Center City Form Based Code.
So is processing, is that more industrial? And so therefore, we're trying to not have that in this area and try and have something that's more retail?
Well, the, the level of processing that they're doing, I, I see exactly what you're asking, but the level of processing that they're looking at, which they wrote in their PUD document, is that they're going to be doing the pre-rolls, which is part of processing. And then the...
Is that pre, I don't even know. That's rolling a cigarette with marijuana.
It's right, because it's...
And then, what else do you do?
Yeah, and...
Do you bake cookies and things like that? So it's a bakery?
Yeah, I want to let them answer exactly what their, their edibles would be.
So I had one follow-up question, I thought. Okay, go ahead.
If you want to just expand on what your processing is?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're planning to use for cookies.
Can you go to the mic, please?
Oh, sorry. So yeah, cookies, chocolate bars, gummies.
Pre-rolls.
But like the CO2 extracters or whatever we've seen pictures of that require venting and...
No. We're going to be using a heat press, which is exactly what's approved for at-home use by Oklahoma for patients. So I mean, it's just two bars with heat and pressure.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Scott?
Thank you, you led right into my question, Jane, which is about the pre-rolls. You know, what are you wanting to get the PUD for? And so it sounds like you're not using chemicals, which in the past, I know that we've had that conversation when people came before the council, is making sure that there's no smell or chemicals being used or hazardous, things like that. So to me, I guess I'm happy to support it. You know, you're just trying to bake, bake cookies and do pre-rolls. I just want to ask if there's a guarantee that they won't be able to bring in the large extractions as well as, you know, in the chemicals? So that's my first question.
So within the PUD document itself, under processing, it says extraction will be done using a heat press machine, which is a tabletop appliance, approximately six square feet of space. No chemical extraction at the property.
Perfect, that's exactly what I wanted to hear. And then, so I guess my other question would be, how does, should this pass this evening? Would that, does this affect the integrity of the Center City Form Based Code in any way?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, it's just for this particular tract.
That's what, yeah, it's just, I know that there is, you know, there are other opinions and so I just wanted to kind of, I just want to make sure I'm clear. You know, that there, it won't hurt the entire code that was under moratorium for a while and that people worked on extremely hard. So I'm just trying to confirm, confirm that before I vote. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Hall?
I have a couple of follow-up questions. So when you originally submitted your request for CCPUD, you also were going to request to grow? And my understanding is when that was presented to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did not approve the application at that time because of the grow portion. So you were okay with taking the grow piece out of your CCPUD request? Is that correct?
Yes, we were going to use two hundred square feet. So, I mean, it was just going to be supplemental.
Yeah, I'm just curious, when you relocated to this location and were opening as a dispensary, did you know at that time that you wanted to change your business model? Or were you intending to just operate as a dispensary?
No, we, we did know that we were going, we had already applied with the state for a processing license. And as soon as we got it is when all the, we became aware that we would have to actually get special use for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
My question was kind of already answered, but the, so concern being that this PUD stays with this property, you know, forever, based on there not being any changes by this body in the future. And so just to be clear, though, in the PUD that would be staying with this property forever, it does restrict the uses to what's in there? Any, a dispensary or business five years from now or ten years from now or twenty years from now that wanted to locate in that building and wanted to put in a processing business would not be able to do the heavy machinery and the things like that? Is that the way I understand it? They would have to come and get another CCPUD or, you know, in the future?
So correct, and I guess I want to make sure with legal too, but in, in their PUD, they're saying that dispensing a thousand square, I'm sorry, eleven hundred square feet would be used for the sales floor or storage. And then in the processing, they say proposes using a thousand square feet of the property to process for the edibles, pre-rolls, and stuff like that. So it's my understanding that any new business coming in there would have to adhere to these square footages, the way it's, it's split up.
And then, so I guess my other question would be, how does, should this pass this evening? Would that, does this affect the integrity of the Center City Form-Based Code in any way?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, it's just for this particular tract.
That's what, I, yeah, it's just, I know that there is, you know, there are other opinions, and so I just wanted to kind of, I just want to make sure I'm clear, you know, that there, it won't hurt the entire code that was under moratorium for a while, and that people worked on extremely hard. So I'm just trying to confirm, confirm that before I vote. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Hall.
I have a couple of follow-up questions. So, when you originally submitted your request for C C P U D, you also were going to request to grow? And my understanding is, when that was presented to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did not approve the application at that time, because of the grow portion.
Right.
Um, so you were okay with taking the grow piece out of your C C P U D request, is that correct?
Yes, we were going to use 200 square feet, so, I mean, it was just going to be supplemental.
Yeah, I'm just curious, when you relocated to this location and were opening as a dispensary, did you know at that time that you wanted to change your business model? Or were you intending to just operate as a dispensary?
No, we, we did know that we were going, we had already applied with the state for a processing license, and as soon as we got it, is when all the, we became aware that we would have to actually get special use for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Holman.
My question was kind of already answered, but the, so, concern being that this P U D stays with this property, you know, forever, based on there not being any changes by this body in the future. And so, just to be clear, though, in the PUD that would be staying with this property forever, it does restrict the uses to what's in there. Any, a dispensary or business five years from now, or 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, that wanted to locate in that building and wanted to put in a processing business, would not be able to do the heavy machinery and the things like that, is that the way I understand it? They would have to come and get another C C P U D, or, you know, in the future?
So correct, and I guess I want to make sure with legal too, but in, in their PUD, they're saying that dispensing 1,000 square, I'm sorry, 1,100 square feet would be used for the sales floor or storage. And then, in the processing, they say proposes using 1,000 square feet of the property to process for the edibles, pre-rolls, and stuff like that. So, it's my understanding that any new business coming in there would have to adhere to these square footages, the way it's, it's split up.
And?
And it also explicitly states there will be no chemical extraction at the property. So I think if that's the concern, it's addressed in the P U D.
So the type of processing is restricted to this specific type?
Correct.
For as lo, at this property, for as long as this PUD exists, until a future tenant may want to change it, or?
Correct, they would have to come back and get your approval.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Petron.
I'm going to ask mine in a minute, I'm going to, if you, if I can pass, I'm still learning here.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Carter.
My button's not working, so, um, I know what I was going to ask. So, did this go to the Planning Commission?
It did.
And what happened?
At Planning Commission, they, as the applicant stated, they had a proposal for a 200 and, I think it was 250 square feet of a grow tent in the back. And there were a lot of questions and concerns from Planning Commission about the, the grow. They'd asked if it, the type of filtration and stuff like that, that they had on the tent, and the applicant said that there is a, I believe, a carbon filtration on that 250 square feet. But ultimately, Planning Commission did, did not support that request.
Okay.
For the whole PUD with the grow included.
So then, did they remove the grow and then reapply, and did it go back to the Planning Commission, or?
No, between Planning Commission and City Council, they have removed the grow portion. So, a less, less of a request, essentially, not, not more, you know, intense of a use, but so they're just taking the grow out.
I mean, I'm just going to tell you guys, you know, we just started this area of town that we're trying to cultivate into a, a thing, you know, and so, I have a little hesitation. I mean, it seems like super nice people doing the right thing, but I just tell you, I just have a little bit of hesitation in that, you know, we're just now letting this area do its thing, and to make a permanent, and it was permanent, right? Is that what?
It, it would be the zoning for the lot.
Permanent change, I, I think what Councilmember just said makes me feel a little uncomfortable. I haven't totally decided yet, but I'm just, just saying, you know, hearing the Planning Commission, and, and then not knowing if the only injection was growing, I mean, not having them here to say, well, were you concerned about this change to the Form-Based Code? You know, so early in the process of having a Form-Based Code, or were you not concerned at all? Because they're more tuned into this planning stuff than probably I am. But I'm just as a, just kind of taking it all in right now, I'm just a little uncomfortable with it, let's just put it that way.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Hall.
So, I have really struggled with this, because I am totally in support of our local businesses being successful and thriving. However, for me personally, the larger issue here is that we are really at a critical point in the future of our Center City Form-Based Code. We spent four months following, or while we were in an administrative delay, starting a year ago tonight, to address some of the technical language, but also the spirit and the vision of what the community is expecting in the Form-Based Code. And we passed a series of amendments to address some of those things, just in July of this year. And so, this, this has just been really less than six months since we've been able to see if the changes that we've made are actually going to be effective and achieve some of the things that we're looking for. And so that's really why I'm struggling with this particular application for Center City P U D, which I know is your only option, and that's what makes it hard. But, to my knowledge, since Center City Form-Based Code Amendment Package was passed in July, there've been very few projects that have come forward, two that actually are operating under our new guidelines. We've had one other C C P U D request in November, that our council did not approve for a unanimous vote of 9-0. And so, I think this, of the projects that are currently going forward in Center City, literally half of the things that we're looking at have been a request using the Center City P U D option. So, I don't have an objection to the concept of C C P U Ds, PUDs, or SPUDs as a tool to provide flexibility for creativity and exceptional community benefit. But, in, in the instance of these C C P U D, I really would like to give it an opportunity to let the changes that we've made breathe, and to try to get some things that don't require a C C P U D to move forward. It is a permanent change, we are trying to achieve a vision that our community expected. And I just feel like we need to take a really strong look at this, and we need to, in this particular period of time, that these C C P U Ds really need to meet a high standard of offering commen, uh, community benefit, and supporting the vision of the Center City Form-Based Code. So, for myself, I'm not able to support this tonight, and that's really hard for me to say, because I want your business to be successful. But I also am strongly committed to letting the C C, the Center City Form-Based Code evolve and take form, and to try to encourage applications that can actually operate under the regulating plan, to see how this is going to work. It is a living, breathing document, we are able to make changes to it as we go through time. And, but I'd like to find out first if it's actually working as it's intended. So, I'm sorry, but I'm not going to be able to support this tonight.
Just a reminder to council, we haven't had public comment yet, so there's still an opportunity to get additional feedback on this project. With that said, thank you, council member. Councilwoman Petron.
Catherine, if this, just procedurally speaking, if this, or anybody else, if it doesn't pass under a C C P U D, can they reapply for another, like, change language and apply for another C C P U D down the line? Is it wait a year, or is it, what is the process for that?
They can apply, I don't, if, if something changes, they can apply quickly, there's no timeline.
Okay, and then, I was just trying to refresh my memory on what the final, looking at this email again, and I guess maybe Stephen, maybe, um, here's my frustration, is that, to me, the pre-roll thing is like, I wish that our processing tiers that we're coming up with was like, that's a given with a dispensary? To me, that's just kind of part of what they, you know, part of the merchandise that they carry in a dispensary? So if we could make some sort of, that's a given, but the other extraction stuff, and I can understand that being processing, or be, us treating it differently, so that's, we haven't done that. Am I correct, that we're proposing, Stephen, in the processing licenses, the tiers, or whatever?
That pre-rolls are given for dispensaries?
We don't have that, is, I, I would, maybe if we could consider doing that, then?
I think because the state law considers it processing.
Yeah, right, and I'm not saying that they wouldn't still need a processing, what I'm putting, processing license, but that we classify it as something, you know, like, that it's pre-roll only? Um, just so that we know on these?
Yeah.
Special use and process, and, and, um, applications, that it's what that is, your dispensary.
I don't have a copy of that ordinance with me, I was trying to pull it up on my email real quick, but that's not cooperating.
Well, I guess that's just...
But that's something we'll look at, that's, I think Beth in our office sent that out last week, maybe, to you all? Looking for comments, we're coming up on the Planning Commission deadline, but I'll, I'll look at that and follow up with an email tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And then I guess, following up on what Councilmember Carter said, it would be super helpful if Planning Commission gave us like a one paragraph of we denied, or we, you know, we, I voted yes because, or I voted no because, for a history to make it here like a court, like an opinion. I'm just throwing that out there for the mayor. I meant to listen to public comment, but I think that's...
Thank you, council member. Councilwoman Holman.
Uh, just comment that I do agree with, I, I think pre-rolls should be kind of a given thing, as part of being a dispensary. Uh, but also have, kind of struggle with this issue too, because it, if you're just outside the Center City area, you know, you can get a special use to do in processing stuff. And so we're really just saying, in this part of downtown, you can't do it. So, kind of have some remorse that in Center City policy, we didn't come up with a way for it to, a change to not be permanent. So your only option is a permanent change with a Center City P U D, or nothing, you got to move or something. So I don't think it should be that way, and I think we're probably, that might be something we might put back on our list of Center City policies that we're going to revisit. We do have a list of Center City policy issues that we are continuing to look at and potentially revise, and I think that's going to be one that's kind of brought out by this meeting, is there's got to be some other way to do what you're wanting to do without a permanent change, which causes uncomfort amongst, you know, members of the council, to a way where, with like a special use, it stays with your business. If your business leaves, then that permission is gone from that property. So, I think we've, we've got some changes I think we're going to need to look at, perhaps, in light of this situation, regardless of what happens tonight with the vote, so.
Thank you, council member. Before we go to public comment, my question would be, are there any other businesses where this permanent change would be applicable? I mean, almost by default, it is unique to this industry.
I'm sorry, I don't, what do you mean, are there any other, what?
Well, I understand everyone's concern about a permanent change, but what other industry does this possibly apply to? So, we're just creating something that we're creating by ordinance all the other times?
May, what I would guess as an example would be, you know, we're trying to make it so that ground-level commer, or space on Main Street, and, uh, Main Street specifically, as an example, is retail, commercial space, and not offices. So if somebody wanted to put an office in, they would probably need to get a Center City P U D.
No, I'm talking about this specific space.
Oh, this specific, specific building?
I mean, the concern is, we're, we're changing the nature permanently. And I get if we're opening some Pandora's Box about a business, that would be there. Essentially, it would appear we're making it so this only applies to medical marijuana establishments, because what other industries pre-roll and make edibles?
Well, this, this would apply to this lot, and because, like I said, in the, in the Center City Form-Based Code, they can dispense right now, so I mean, they're, they're operating their dispensary, you know, as we speak. But with, within the guidelines of the, the Center City Form-Based Code, the processing, growing, and any of those other uses fall under the requirement to get the Center City P U D.
I understand all of that.
Yeah.
My, again, my concern is, the hangup is we're making a permanent change that impacts a very small industry, one in which all over the city, we're granting the same exception. So is it the concern that they'll only be processors and won't fit into the retail image that we had in mind? Or that it's a, I, I guess I'm just not understanding the concern of the per, I get the changing thing permanently is a big deal, but if a incense shop moved in, a clothing store, this permanent change would have zero impact on the vision of Center City Form-Based Code? I guess that's my question. Like, is there any other industry where this would even be applicable?
Off the top of my head, I can't think of one.
A tobacco shop? There's one.
Well, they wouldn't have to get a...
Right, okay, I was just making sure, like, I, I get everyone's heartache with that, but it, it appears to be a very limited instance. Okay, just making sure I wasn't missing something, thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
So, Mayor Clark's comments brought up in my mind, what I think my fear is, that we create precedence as we are applying, I mean, you know, um, so if next week, somebody with the example wants to put an office in somewhere, and we say, will we be able to say, no, you can't do that with a C C P U D? So that's kind of where I'm, I'm kind of want, I kind of, I guess I see Councilmember Hall's point of we, right now, this is such a new system, that we kind of want to follow the letter of the law as we are enforcing things, and, you know, we're bubbling, things are bubbling up that are problematic, and I see this as a problem in our ordinance, that we need to figure out a way to have something temporarily special used in that area, because there are times, I think, that we could, but that's a legislative issue that you guys probably don't care about. But, um, but I would, I have fear around doing a C C P U D and not following our letter of the law as we try to apply it throughout a whole region. Does that make sense?
I totally appreciate the concern with the slippery slope, especially with the new one, but because it's such a nuanced industry, one that we found an error in and have tried to fix, and O M M A is not helping us, I feel like if something came across where they wanted adjustment, we could say like, oh no, you're an established industry. This was one that we had no choice, because the rules were handed down to us by the state agency. So I'm seeing a difference in it, but I understand the slippery slope, but I do think there is a difference, because it is this area. Councilmember Hall.
I think that's been part of my struggle about how to arrive at what my vote was going to be tonight. The individual request versus the overall goal that we're trying to achieve in Center City. And I think it would be, I'm going to try to come at this a little bit different way. So, Center City Form-Based Code was implemented in 2017. Pretty significant changes were made to it through the work of the Ad Hoc Committee that was appointed by the mayor. And we're trying to, there, there's been, I, I would say, from my constituents in Ward Four, generally speaking, disappointment in how the Center City Form-Based Code has been implemented, how it has been interpreted, how it is currently developing and evolving. And I think it's really important that we do take a pause, because when you go this route with the use of the C C P U D, and like I said before, this is the only option they have. But we are, when we're doing this parcel by parcel with a Form-Based Code that we're trying to get to work, the way we're envisioning it to work, it just kind of undermines the fabric of the comprehensive plan. And I, again, am completely sympathetic with the fact that if you go a couple blocks away, or you're in a different part of town, that it would be a different process, that is precisely the point. This is Form-Based Code, this is different than any other zoning that we use in Norman. We're trying to achieve a vision that our community invested in. And I think we just have to hold all of this to a higher standard, to make sure we're really getting what we want in Center City, because frankly, we're really not getting what we want at this point in Center City. So, to keep using this process with these individual parcels, it's not helping to see if we are on the right track, because we keep having to carve little pieces of parcels up, because it's not, they can't operate it under the regulating plan. So, I think it's almost two different issues, because we're also struggling with getting our medical marijuana ordinances right. And I know we're all committed to getting those right, and allowing everyone to find success in their business. And that's why I was so curious as to why you located in this particular location, because it is in Center City, and I'm assuming that you understand that you're under a different, you're under Center City Form-Based Code, and not the regular zoning ordinances throughout the rest of the city. So, it, it's a, it's a dilemma, but I'm choosing to take more of the 10,000-foot view, because I hear this from my constituents on a daily basis. And so that, that's why I've arrived where I am.
No, I can appreciate that, I just feel like if it's, what, what they're doing is something we want to be commercial anyways.
That's a whole nother question.
And, yeah, I know, we're weighing too...
Uh huh.
The intertwined, but very different issues.
Yes.
Thank you, council member. Councilwoman Bierman.
Councilmember Hall kind of came around to where I was going with it. I mean, you can throw euphemisms out all day. For me, it's not a slippery slope, it's a death by a thousand cuts. I don't know how we can say that the foundation of the center city form-based code is strong when 50% of the applications coming in are not following the standards that we've set. There's a very good argument to make that the CCPUD is the standard, not the center city form-based code. When 50% of applications that come in are for a PUD and not for the regulations and the standards that we've set for this particular property. And I agree that I am sorry that you are in this position. And I do get that, you know, a block here or a block there makes a difference. But as Councilmember Hall has stated, we have designated this area as distinct and different and special for a reason. And we're still struggling to get that right. So if there, if there is any public comment, I would love to hear it. But that is, my question is which of these competing questions is more important for the 10,000-foot view? Because that's what we as policymakers, in my opinion, have to be looking at. That's our job.
Thank you, council member. Councilwoman Scott.
Um, let me brief. I, I respect everything that went through, again, with the center city form-based code. Absolutely respect the process. Um, I think that zoning can be problematic, um, sometimes. But, so I'm trying to think of this now from a consumer perspective. If I can go anywhere else in the city of Norman and get a joint or an edible, you know, I mean, I'm sure you can order them, you're still able to sell them in order, or, you know, sell them like that. But if you're wanting to cut your costs as a, you know, local family-owned business, you're wanting to do it in-house. And so if, you know, you aren't able to afford that extra cost, um, and I'm not a business owner, I just do tech support. Um, but if, if I were in that position and I couldn't afford it, and then I wouldn't be selling joints, and then if I was just a, you know, person, a consumer, walking down the street and seeing your, you know, Grateful Dead, um, dispensary, being like, oh, I love that band, I'm gonna go into this, um, dispensary and see what, and get me a joint. Um, and then being, walking in there and saying, oh, you don't sell joints? And then you guys get to say, well, yeah, the city of Norman actually disapprove, or like, didn't approve our, you know, um, PUD, which modern or just like, person off the street may not even know what that is. Um, but then you get, you know, it's, this is what we talk about all the time, is being a difficult city to work with. Like, our local, our small businesses, um, we have a, a, a track record of being difficult, um, to work with. And I think that's, uh, I don't wanna say a stigma, but that was reported to us, I believe, back in, a, a few months ago when we had the presentation from, uh, the management partners. It's, yeah, I'm remembering that correctly. So there's, it's been a, this has been kind of a trend with us. And I'm, now I'm just trying to think as a, you know, as a consumer, how does that affect me? You know, I go to this dispensary, and then how does it affect you as a local business owner? You know, it puts strain on this relationship. Um, so to me, I think I value providing the services, you know, to our local businesses and providing the service to, um, cannabis users who have their medical cards. It's medical, uh, for medical purposes. Like, I, I value that a little bit more than I do, I guess, the, um, the permanency of a PUD in this area that is very, very specific to this industry and to, um, to you. So that's where I'm coming from, just trying to like, just to, so y'all know. If I were just a person walking down the street and wanted to buy a joint from y'all, you know, and you didn't have them, I would be disappointed.
Thank you, council member. Councilwoman Carter.
Okay, I'm sorry to be so naive. Okay. Now, so I was under the, I'm trying to understand this business model. So I was under the impression that a retail marijuana store could sell, sells marijuana in whatever form that they are presenting it in, that, that you could go acquire a cookie or a pre-roll or a gummy at some, from other location if you were processed, and bring it to this retail location and still sell it. Is that correct? Is that a rule?
I, I guess I'm confused. Uh, do you mean that we buy from someone else?
You, to sell those processed products, do you have to make them onsite? Is that?
No, no, no. No, we, we are making them onsite because it would, it would be beneficial.
To you to not have to process them at a different location or buy them from a different processor?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
The patient, and ultimately, they are patients.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Good discussion. Seeing no other comments, uh, this is an opportunity for the public to make any comments regarding this matter. Evan, come on down.
So glad to see everybody. Sean? It's where you belong. Don't tell Daryl I said that. Okay, um, I have a great name, right? Evan Dunn, Evan Alexander Dunn. I live over at 1400 Garfield Avenue, place where on Sundays, there are events around dusk. Uh, perpetual invite to anyone here. Who knows? There's a TP, so there's a max, uh, capacity of about 10. Might have to get Chief King to confirm that. But anyways, that being said, let's differentiate. For me, the dispensaries that do pre-rolls, that is not processing. That is, you're just taking the flour that you have and you're just stuffing it into a, a format for getting that medicine to you. If you're baking or doing, what'd you say, Joe, the CO2 extraction? I've heard that term too. Uh, if you're doing that, that to me is processing. Uh, I don't have all the facts, but I believe this is in center city and we have a certain vision for center city, right? I think that we need to reassess the vision, we need to rethink about what it is, what our goals are. Because as times change, people's sensibilities change. And as far as precedent, I personally, I don't have a problem, uh, setting a precedent, uh, that can be changed later. You know, there's nothing stopping future coun- councils in the future backtracking, just like we've all done, on issues that were contentious then, we go back and we deal with it again. You know, future councils can do that too. We don't want them to, but if it comes to pass that that's the way it has to be then.
Thank you.
Robert Husky, 3615 Chatham Court, Ward three. I, uh, really was confused when the idea of a s- this city center form-based code was proposed. Because I was thinking about all the people who are so hung up, or rightfully so, on I can do whatever I want to on my property. Well, even when things happen outside of center city, the city has already been, being sued over one particular case that I was involved in, sorry to say. Can they, well, not really. But that had to do with, I can do whatever I want to with my property. And so that really bothered me with this city center form-based code, that you were actually going to implement it in a rigid way. But I believe in it now. I really do. I think it's a great thing. Uh, I can see why, how it would really do it, transform the city, the center city, and make it into something really, really interesting and wonderful for this unique town anyway. So my feeling is, my opinion about this, even though I think, yes, we should all support any kind of new business, I really think you should think very seriously about doing any kind of change to this whole process of the center city form-based code. Otherwise, you might as well just throw it away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian Moore, 811 Mockingbird, Lee's District, our ward there. Um, as we talked about this, and I think Representative Scott touched on this, my concern with basing a decision off of the city co- city center code or form-based code there, what you're doing by not allowing this specific change is, in my mind, establishing a precedent that will not allow this industry to succeed within the city ba- city center code. The, the price point associated with buying the pre-roll from another person compared to manufacturing it yourself is significant, along with edibles. So in doing this, and, and I don't have a good answer, I wish I could tell you that I'd be a yay or a nay here. I think you guys are determining whether this industry gets to operate within city center at all. Because the price points will be such a significant difference that the likelihood of a business being able to survive, uh, based on the market dynamics will change. Um, and that's my concern. I, it's, I don't own a business, never have, but I would like to see that all businesses maintain the opportunity to succeed equally. So, uh, in that, I think you're determining which businesses and nature of businesses get to survive in city center without changing the dynamics that allow them to do what everybody else is al- already allowed to do.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, are there any other final comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Hall.
Um, in, uh, you helped me to think of, um, another clarification on the center city form-based code. So thank you, Ian. Um, so the center city project area is really relatively small. And within that project area, there are multiple areas that are really primary, uh, primarily residential in nature. So the only places that you can even operate a business are along Main Street and a very, you know, limited number of blocks within the project area and also in Gray and Webster location where they are. So, um, while I understand, um, your concern, um, I think it's also helpful to understand that the, that, uh, the form-based code regulates, um, this area in multiple different ways and a lot of diverse ways to promote an urban walkable neighborhood and, um, to have mixed use of retail, commerce, professional offices, that sort of thing. So, um, there, it, it, it's a small area anyway where businesses are even operating within the form-based code. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilwoman Petron.
So in listening to Evan and Ian's comments and Mr. Husky as well, um, I feel like it's important for us to make the change, um, that we need to make. That for dispensaries, it should just be a given that that particular pre-roll goes along with it. For our definition, I'm not talking about O M M A, I'm talking about, and I know that they'll still have to get the processing license, but that we have a tier that, um, is kind of automatically, unless they just don't wanna pay for that, it's a, um, shall, you shall be able to. Um, so in that, with respect to that and knowing that we can alleviate this problem, we can make it to where they're able to set up shop in that area if we have a tier for processing that says you're doing pre-rolls because that goes along with dispensaries. Um, they wouldn't need a PUD. So I think that for my purposes and knowing from circling back to my original question to, um, Catherine, which was can they come back? Well, the change would be happening on our side, so they could come back and still be able to set up shop with their pre-rolls, um, so that we haven't impeded that commerce. Um, but I do have heartburn about, um, opening Pandora's box. I have my own euphemism. Um, with, or whack-a-mole, or however you wanna, um, with PUDs down in that area. Um, so I hope that, um, that you don't see it as though I'm not supportive of your business. I think that we can make up here a, uh, a path for you that it doesn't affect all, the whole center city, um, project that people have spent thousands of hours trying to put together. Um, and I hope that we do that quickly because it's already on, it's, it's going to planning very soon anyway. And I think we can, um, this was a perfect example of why we need to do that. So, um, yeah, that's where I'm at with it.
Thank you, council member. Councilwoman Holman.
Um, again, I, I completely agree. Um, I don't know if, maybe I need to get with, uh, Catherine tomorrow morning and just clarify what that, how we would add that in, where. Um, and then, um, uh, 'cause I definitely would support that. My, I guess, concern or problem with this proposal reject, and rejecting it potentially is that, um, uh, you know, center city form-based code, um, for me, really evolved out of what buildings look like and where they're placed. And not as much what an existing business is doing inside of the building. And in this case, they're not altering the existing building at all. Um, they're only asking permission to do more inside of that building than what they're allowed to do under a policy that we recently changed, um, as a council in the la- I say recent, in the last, you know, two, three years. Um, so that's where I struggle with this is because it's, it's not a building. It's not, they're not building anything new. They're not asking, as in the example of our previous proposal that we denied, they were asking to build something different than what our for- our form-based code prescribes. Um, and, um, this particular building, I've, in my lifetime, I can't recall any building, any business, uh, ever being there very long. Um, and so struggle with trying, we wanna, I wanna support a existing business that has, um, taken a risk on a building that isn't, um, hasn't seen a lot of success before. And they're not making any alterations to the building itself or what it looks like or, um, but I do, uh, understand the concerns about consistency with the code that we, and the policy that we put in place and the PUD being more and more used. Um, I guess you could say that could show that there are some further flaws in our policy if, if people aren't being able to find a way to use our existing policy. Uh, so, um, well, anyway, those are just my concerns and thoughts about it. I, uh, probably, uh, support my colleague on the council who represents this area. Um, but I do, uh, have a little bit different perspective about this pers- specific proposal in regard to a building and where it's at and how it's used instead of, and compared to an existing business wanting to use the built, uh, the interior a different way. So, um, if we can make some changes to, um, make sure there's a little bit more fairness in regard to two blocks over, you can get a special use permit, which stays with your business and allows you to do this. Um, or if you're in the center city area, you just can't do it because it's permanent and there's concern about that. So hopefully we can find a path forward that allows, uh, this business and others to, um, thrive in the center city form-based area, form-based code area. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Scott.
Um, and I, I just kinda wanna reiterate my earlier comments and then also say again, I admire all of the work that went into the, um, center city form-based code from many of you up here. Um, and I support Councilmember Hall as a person, um, but just this one, I just feel like I'm, my dilemma, it, I think is just coming from a totally different perspective. You know, it's not coming from a zoning perspective and, you know, the permanency of the change, again, which only affects this small, you know, industry. And I agree with Councilmember Holman, you know, it was about aesthetics for the most part, I think, is what you said that, uh, began this sort of process is ma- like having a uniform sort of placemaking feel to the area, walkable, um, you know, easy, easy to get around, parking and things like that. And so that's what it was about, uh, initially. And so, um, for me, again, it, it comes back to the patient perspective. You know, if I could go in as a patient, you know, if you're looking, you know, just to get some, get some pre-rolls, why go to somewhere, um, where they are having to jack up the prices because they're having to purchase from an outside, um, entity? So it hurts not only, again, the patient, if they don't, if they're, you know, they go in there and they have to buy it. go in there and they have to buy it at a higher price, um, and we're all struggling, uh, for, for money sometimes. Um, and so, if it, it's, it's going to hurt them, and it's going to hurt the local business rather, and, and I don't think, that's just where I'm coming from. I think it hurts the patient more so, um, if we, you know, reject this. And I, and I also agree with Councilmember Petron, that ultimately it needs to be something that we just rope into our ordinance, and I don't, but the thing is, for me rejecting this tonight, how long is that going to take us? We all know government moves slow, and we know, we have also a track record of postponing stuff, so, um, I don't, with, like, when can they come back? You know, when, that's, that's kind of my, uh, opinion on that as well. Or what if we pass something and they don't know, and we don't tell them, we don't reach out, and so they're still not selling pre-rolls? Um, sorry to go off on a rant a little bit, but that, so I support the idea of making sure that's roped in, and I also think that it should be up to the state, uh, but that's a whole nother, um, thing. So, just wanted to reiterate those thoughts, appreciate all the perspectives, um, but that's where I'm coming from, is the patient sort of access to medicine perspective.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Scanlon.
We knew when we passed this, and Councilmember Hall mentioned this, that we were going to have lessons learned, uh, and at some point, changes should be made. Uh, I, I guess my feeling is, and, and you've brought to our attention a change that should be made. Uh, and I'm not sure that I see that we should wait forever for not much of other things before we tie modification. But my, my issue is, is bureaucratic, and, and, and what I don't like frankly, is, is the notion of, of an exception here, an exception there. The way, the remedy is to amend the code, and I don't know why we have to wait too long to do that. And I think that's the conversation you're going to have, uh, with, uh, with Catherine Walker, to try to reach, uh, some wording that we can consider and approve. So, that's not the answer you wanted tonight. I want to fix the problem, not the symptom. So, that, that's where I'm coming from. I will, I will vote not to sustain this, but emphatically state that we need, need to fix the code, we need to do it correctly.
Thank you, councilmember.
I understand the vision between for Center City Form-Based Code, but my 10,000-foot view of policymaking is a case-by-case basis, and I see a clear distinction between this specific case and other ones. Yes, we need to fix the problem, not the symptoms, and when we do that, this change we're making essentially becomes moot, and that's why I think it is wholly different than any other change. So, I'm going to support it because of that distinction. I have supported Center City Form-Based Code before, and I will do, I point out, the state's sure not helping us out, but because once we do fix it, this exception becomes moot, I'm fine with it. It just speeds it up in licensing process, uh, and the chamber with these new businesses to really try, try and explain the requirements of zoning when you purchase property, and I know that, like, why wouldn't rolling be fine? And again, that's not us deciding that. So, uh, but hopefully we can help small business owners and entrepreneurs with that going forward. I think we have a environment of customer service. So, going forward, I, I encourage, again, everyone to be very clear on that, but that's why I'll be voting yesterday. So, uh, looks like we have one more comment. Councilmember Bierman.
One thing to add to what you said, I really think if there is a mechanism to, when we do have something like a Center City Form-Based Code, that it be required to be disclosed in lease agreements or in purchase agreements. I, I feel like this is something that is so different that it really, any well-meaning person can fall into a situation that maybe we wouldn't accept from someone who clearly would know better, but it makes us want to grant exceptions in cases that maybe we wouldn't for someone else who we think should have known better. So, I don't know what that looks like, I don't know if we have a way to require it, but that's something that I would like to see us do, is have whatever mechanism we can to require notification of these specific zoning differences, um, because I think that that's something that we should try and avoid where we can.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, with that, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, by a vote of two to seven, voting in support, Councilmember Scott and Mayor Clark.
All right. After that robust discussion, we still have one more item on the agenda, item thirty. Ordinance nineteen twenty dash thirty-one, adopting and ratifying the assessment role for the UNP Business Improvement District, establishing the time and terms of payment of assessments, fixing penalties for delinquent payment, setting forth the tracts or parcels of land against which the assessments are being adopted, ratified, and levied, directing the city clerk to prepare, sign, attest, and record with the Cleveland County Clerk following passage of payment deadline, add claim for lien for any unpaid amount due and assessed against a tract or parcel of land. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to recognize Catherine Walker, our city attorney, to make a presentation.
Um, so this item comes forward to you after the creation of a Business Improvement District back, back in 2014. If you go to the next slide. Um, basically, it's set up at the, a district so that legacy park maintenance, legacy trail maintenance, and other enhancements could be paid for in part by TIF funds, uh, but in part by property owners in the area as well. And so, this ordinance is, uh, taking care of the property owner's portion for this year. Uh, the Business Improvement District provides for $200,000 per year in assessments for ten years. When it was initially set up, it was set up so that the, uh, the TIF funds, uh, being contributed to this, a total of $900,000, would start at $200,000 the first year, and then continue to decrease by $25,000 each year after that, while the developments portion, the property owner's portion, would increase by $25,000 each year after that. And this was done to encourage, uh, additional development to occur, to help, uh, pay those costs and have more property owners to spread those costs across. If you go to the next slide. Uh, we base the assessments on the taxable value of the developed properties. Um, so you can see all the years we've done these assessments. Uh, this year, we'll be assessing the property owners, $150,000, uh, $50,000 will be funded by the TIF. Uh, by statute, Business Improvement Districts, uh, can, uh, be in place for ten years, and the property owners at that time could petition the city to create the Business Improvement District or continue the Business Improvement District, um, or it could be assumed by the city, uh, or UNP Master Association, if that's what the property owners were willing to do. These allocations are not, uh, done on a fiscal year basis, so they roll over from prior years, um, so that if all of the funds aren't spent in one year, it rolls over to the next, uh, for additional maintenance or other needs. Um, we are required by statute to have a public hearing, we've provided notice via mail and by publication. Uh, objections are required by statute to be, uh, filed at least three days prior to the hearing, and we haven't received any objections. This ordinance, before council tonight, would levy those assessments, uh, against the property owners, we'll send out invoices. We try to time those payments so that they'll tie with the property tax payments, so they're due March thirty-first, and then they'll be appropriated in the 2021 budget. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
Okay, had a couple, couple questions. Um, is there a standard of maintenance that's required to, to maintain out there, like, and, and I ask because I noticed that their parking lots are in terrible posi- condition? Not that I shop there often, just saying.
So, you're not talking about the park parking lot?
Not the park parking lot, is that, so this is just for the park?
This is, this is to maintain the legacy park and the trails. Uh, it's also allowed to use to provide other enhancements, they've paid for, um, holiday lighting in the park, uh, things like that.
Okay.
But primarily, it's been used for the park.
Well, then my question doesn't, doesn't make sense. And, uh, I did, I wrote a que- couple of other ones, so, uh, you said it goes with the, the property owners, is it the whole Twenty-Fourth Avenue?
It's the entire TIF district's, uh, uh, developed property, so.
Of developed.
Uh, Tecumseh on the north, Robinson on the south, the airport on the east.
And it's the property owners not dependent on a lease being held?
Right, it's property owners.
Right, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other questions? Councilmember Petron.
Um, I remember reading in, um, on the consent docket, there was a, you threw some language in there, or somebody did, about, um, the last, that UNP question, not having any bearing at all on the pending referendum litigation, but I didn't see that in here, and I remember that the entrances were part of the, um, amended project plan. Um, and this has language in here, about 196,000 leveraged with UNP developer funds for the entrances as well. So, I'm wondering how that, can you make me feel a little more comfortable about that?
Similar to, uh, the incentive that was approved on the consent agenda, um, this also is something that has both been set up outside of the project plan, but is also authorized by both the 2006 plan and the 2019 amendment. So, regardless of how an election on the referendum turns out, these are authorized under either scenario.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Are there any other comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, are there any final comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance, excuse me, the motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final. All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
To address city council, where marks should be directed to the council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less.
Hello, my name is Gary Curry. I live at thirteen twenty-one Amherst Avenue in the El Curs addition. My question to the council is, uh, why are, why is the ordinance or the, uh, uh, code that will not allow me to, uh, have a, uh, a carport? Okay? And, I mean, I know that, uh, vehicles nowadays cost a lot of money. Matter of fact, I just, uh, bought a new truck, and when they were talking about the hell that may have came in last week, uh, I was just on pins and needles. And, uh, so, I'm not asking to be allowed to, uh, you know, throw up some kind of, you know, plywood cover. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm all for a, uh, a cover approved by the city. So, uh, that's been my problem, and, and I have a lot of neighbors in the, the area that feel the same way, and so.
Mr. Curry, thank you so much for that comment. It's actually been an issue I've been very passionate about, and I believe, Jane, would you be willing to chat with him afterwards about where we're at with that process? I think you'll hopefully be happy with what she has to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thirty-six fifteen Chatham Court, Ward Three. Uh, actually, tonight's discussion made me remember something, and that is that support map on zoning changes, that three hundred some odd watts or other feet or yards or meters or whatever around the edge of a property? Well, it turns out that even tonight, the city owned quite a bit of that property. And when this came up in the, in the zoning change that I happened to be involved in the protest, it made a difference in terms of the percentage of the protest if the city was not included as opposed to being included. And it seems to me, the city decides at the meeting, and that's whether they make their decision about support or not. And I was told at the time, we'll look into this. Well, that gets back to this thing that somebody else said about postponing stuff, and then you never get around to it quite, or somebody forgets unless they're constantly nudged about it. Well, I'm nudging, thought you'd want to know. And, okay, that's enough. Maybe I'll keep nudging.
Counsel, thank you for allowing me to be up here, Madam Mayor, staff. I have become a propagandist. I didn't plan to, I didn't have any expectation, but I have become a propagandist. And the first of my propaganda is this flyer. I should email it to you. The first side is all about the Uthrones. I've talked about those. The other side, I think, I think has a lot of potential. I call it the victory garden solution. So, I'll read it to you. Millions of homes need millions of victory gardens. Millions of barrels of oil could be saved. Millions of pounds of food could be grown, and millions of pounds of carbon dioxide could be sequestered. Millions of muscle calories could be burned, and millions of diets could be bettered. That would mean billions of people's lives all over the world would be better. The revolution has been happening, you've just been missing it. I know that's true, because I'm still waiting for you and billions of other people to steal these ideas too. And there's a picture of a World War II victory garden propaganda piece, and superheroes. There was a comic book that had the superheroes of Batman, Superman, uh, showing them gardening, right, to induce, and, uh, you get the effect. Uh, I, I really think that if we could take the four thousand petition signorees and say, i- i- if it gets thrown out, right, on the technicality, if it gets thrown out, if we can say, look, we've got something even bigger. The city of Norman is going to establish this massive victory garden permaculture, uh, integration with OSU's county extension and the finance department selling bonds or doing something to generate the cash flow that we can use to start paying people for all of the little things that they've been doing, and to create these little locuses of opportunity, where you can go, you can put in two hours at the, the garden in the neighborhood and make twenty bucks. Uh, all the technology that we have, surely we can put something together. How big can that get? Republicans, Democrats?
Okay, um, this is when normally we have final council comments, and we have an executive session, so if anyone has any quick announcements, we can go ahead and do that, so we're not coming back out of executive session. I have no quick announcements, I'm still getting back in the swing of things that have been gone for a couple of weeks. Councilmember Scott?
Thank you, yes, thank you. Um, so, Happy New Year, and also, um, the Ward Eight will have a Ward Eight meeting on, uh, our bimonthly ward meeting that we've been having for the past year and a half, since I've been serving on the council, on the, uh, Sunday, the twenty-sixth, from one thirty to three PM at Fire Station Seven at our usual location and time. Um, my successor, Matt Peacock, congratulations to Matt Peacock, um, on his uncontested election. Uh, he and I will be hosting together, so you guys, Ward Eight, whoever is, uh, watching at home, you may come and attend and meet your counselors. That's all.
Thank you, councilmember. I'm just going to go down the line, don't worry about pressing your buttons. Holman? Scanlon?
Things. Uh, last night, the mayor and I attended a function at Love Works, where we heard four.
Last night, the mayor and I attended a function at Love Works where we heard four young people, high school students, give impassioned presentations on homelessness, sexual violence, wildlife conservation, and pollution. Really neat presentations, well-thought-out by those young people. So if we fear for our future, I came away with the impression that it's in good hands by these very smart, hard-working, impassioned young folks. I went from there to the Warming Shelter that we operate just across the parking lot. We had 35 people there last night. Two of them were new to the system, if you will. We did not know of their presence in Norman until last night. Since we opened that shelter, the statistics now are that we have encountered 89, counting those two people, 89 folks that we were unaware of. And because we were unaware of them, they were not aware of the services that we could possibly offer, such as housing. So this is a big success story, I think. We're working the problem of homelessness one person at a time, but the count's now 89 in terms of folks that we are picking up with this Warming Shelter and providing services to. A slow approach to the problem, but an approach nonetheless. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Wilson?
Councilmember Scanlon has a great point that our city staff has been working very hard with community partners to provide a wonderful warming shelter that has picked up on a lot of needs. I've been, it's, it's been eye-opening for me to serve on the ad hoc committee because I had no idea that we were doing all the things that we are doing in the city to combat homelessness and that there are, there are lots of resources out there and that sometimes it's just a matter of connecting the people with the resources. Currently, our, our Warming Shelter could use Clorox wipes. So if anybody wants to donate those, if you want to drop them by any of my four businesses, I'm happy to take them over there for you or drop them by the Warming Shelter. I think she told me Wednesday is at 1:30?
Yes.
I mean, Bill was there, so that's why I'm looking at him. But, and there are some other opportunities that I'll post on Facebook, but that's the number one need, that and socks. And I want to thank, give a shout out to Susan Smith, who does donated a cot today when I dropped off some coffee with her. I thought that was pretty cool. So we were able to get another cot in there. They can use some more camping cots. No clothing, though, because they're flush with clothing. I also want to quickly say thank you to our city staff for, last Saturday, we had in the snowpocalypse, we nearly didn't make it, but we had a very significant Ward meeting. We had probably more people at that Ward meeting than have been to all of my Ward meetings in the last three years combined, added up together. So it was a very informational. We got a lot of bad information corrected. We got a few things to work on, and city staff took their time and their snow tires to get there. There wasn't any snow, but I know that it was a difficult, arduous journey to get all the way to 72nd and Franklin. But Mr. Pyle, Ms. Walker, Carrie Evenson, Chris Mattingly, and I think that's everybody that was there. But it was two very significant hours of very good information, and I really appreciate the time that was dedicated to that. So, and the next Ward meeting will be the second Saturday in February. And in case you're listening out there, Ward five, we will be having it at Thunderbird Baptist Church. We're a little off because I wanted to have the WQPZ meeting last weekend at Franklin. And anyways, so Franklin was this month, and Thunderbird will be next month, so you don't have to drive across the lake, whatever side of the lake you're on. In March, we will go back to Franklin. So every other month, at the opposite church, every second Saturday, 10:30, that's where you'll find me.
I forgot something. I'm doing a read and ride next Thursday, 6 o'clock. We are at the Central Library. That's where we'll meet. We'll jump on a bus. I'll read some winter-themed books. Come out and see what your bus system looks like. It is ours now. You'll find the event on Facebook. Councilwoman Hall?
I'd just like to remind everybody and invite everyone about the Interfaith Breakfast that the mayor and the Human Rights Commission will be hosting on this coming Monday, January 20th. At, the registration is at 8:00 a.m. The breakfast is at 8:30 a.m. The program begins at 9:00. This is a wonderful way to honor the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. And you do need to make a reservation, is my understanding, and the deadline for that is January 15th. But this is something that I've attended for years, and I would encourage all of you to come out that morning. I also will be having a Ward four meeting. It's going to be at the Central Library. I'm just waiting on confirmation of my room reservation, so stay tuned for date and time, but it'll be towards the end of the month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Petron?
So I too was going to discuss that we, some updates with the Homelessness Task Force, and I wanted to thank Councilmember Scanlon for organizing a trip up to Oklahoma City, for us to be able to take a tour of the Oklahoma City Homeless Alliance and, and what they have managed to build there and just, it's incredible and truly inspiring, a clearinghouse that they've put together of services. And being able to have, just, I don't even remember the number. I know it was over 30 nonprofits that are based right there, from legal aid to mental health and services, just everything right there. And it just really made me refocus and redouble, feel like we, we can do something really amazing here with our day shelter that we're all envisioning. And I'm so grateful to city staff for just the beautiful hearts that they have and such compassion. On that note, similarly related, Point in Time for, is January the 23rd, where we'll be getting a census of our homeless population here in Norman. If you are interested in volunteering to help with Point in Time, you can reach out to city staff, but get assigned to a team to help with that effort. And then the Warming Shelter, okay, you did the Clorox wipes and socks, it's socks in package, so they need to be new. And there is definitely a need for those. And I think that that is, oh, and the drop-off, she was correct. It's the library, Wednesday at 1:30 or at Transition House on Friday afternoons, which is at 700 Asp Avenue, Suite Number Two. So I think that's all I have for today. Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Carter?
Just quickly want to say my gratitudes to Councilmember Scanlon for all the passion and energy you've been putting into the homelessness. You've kind of become the point person. I appreciate other council members that have been diligent in it and the mayor and you guys attending and doing those functions. Councilwoman Petron, it's, it's just awesome. It really just makes me proud to be up here with you guys and really support what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Bierman?
So one of my city council resolutions is to do an annual oversight committee report and then a monthly update of the topics we discussed. So because we're going into executive session, you can find the full 2019 overview on Facebook. But, so just to kind of give the next tentative four-month schedule in February, we are continuing discussion of the Central Norman Zoning Overlay District and tools to address density, updating ordinances related to tobacco to include vaping, and a review and possible changes of our support and opposition zoning maps. Little nudge goes a really long way. In March, we're going to continue our discussion about re-scoping and possibly restructuring and adding some requirements to our boards and commissions. An update on our e-scooter pilot program and our residential lighting ordinance discussion will continue. In April, we're going to look at our building codes and the possible changes in interpretation related to solar panels, a recycling update overview and possible future opportunities. And then in May, we're going to talk about anything the city can do on regulating or banning wastewater disposal wells. So it's going to be a busy few months, and that is subject to change as other more pressing things might take the place of some of those, but that is the current four-month schedule. And you'll get another update after our February meeting, which is the second Thursday of the month. Happy New Year. Hold me to this resolution. I really think it's an important one, and I hope that it's something that continues long after I'm no longer here.
Thank you, Councilmember. One final thing. This Thursday, the 44th Annual Chili Supper Benefit at Norman High. It's $5, all-you-can-eat chili. It's a partnership with NPD and the Fire Department, and it benefits the Christmas Store in Cleveland County, one of my favorite events, and I definitely recommend that you go. It's delicious. And it might be rainy, so good chili weather. With that, item 32. Consideration of adjourning into an executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes, Title 25, Section 30307b4, in order to discuss a tort claim filed by Carrie Bracken through her attorney, Jay Scott Henderson. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of the council meeting and convene into an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into an executive session. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adjourn out of the city council meeting and convene into executive session passes unanimously.
Councilmembers, you may move to the study session room.